Did it go to where? We'll get started and do some work. The planning and zoning board will come to order. Glad to see all of you here. Who is it? Okay.
Eugene's not feeling well this afternoon.
Okay. Well, we'll have to check on him and remember him. Good best thoughts and. Kathy.
Ms. Stokes won't be here either.
Okay. Appreciate her attendance. All right, then we've got enough folks to do the do-da here. Our first order of business is to have a roll call.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Price. Ms. Danny.
Here.
Ms. Gentlecore.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Stroud.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and our next order of business is to approve or disapprove of two and then the minutes of the last meeting. You've had those and had time to read them and digest them. Do you have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve the minutes as in.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, have a motion there second. And I'll just ask for a roll call.
Mr. Russell.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Danny.
For.
Ms. Danny.
That's okay, but count me.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Very good. I'd like to thank the staff for those that are here and not here for a good job of putting this package together. It'll be, it'll aid us in moving through the official and it'll make the public happy and us happy too. All right, the way we're gonna do this tonight is the way we did it last time. We're gonna take each plot. Well, I'm gonna back up from that. I need to let Dave introduce the subject matter of cleaning up the zoning and the land use. And then we'll explain how we're gonna proceed. Go ahead, Dave.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. Really is nice to get back together again. We're gonna start trying to do this on a much more regular basis. As a matter of fact, we're gonna talk to you a little bit later about meeting next month, so we're gonna, we're gonna start getting to be real friendly again. This is phase three of our administrative rezoning project that we've been working on for, I guess, over a year now. We did the first two phases. As you recall, the first phase was the public-owned properties throughout the city. We got those done. The second phase was quite a bit of residential work on North, North Atlantic. And this is phase three. This is, I don't wanna call it a cleanup of some of the properties up on the north side of North Atlantic, but that's pretty much what it is. So these are smaller plots of ground. Phase two is the larger, big condo properties and some of the larger sites. This is more of a group of smaller sites. I believe there's five properties in here. And as Lamar said, this is going to be a, two ordinances for each piece of property. And I won't get into too much of Lamar's procedural talk, but it's required. These are all zoned commercial, and they also have a future land use of commercial, and they're all built residentially. So that creates a problem since the council several years ago determined that residential was no longer allowed in commercial zoning districts. What happened is, as a result of that decision, these residential properties became what's called legal nonconforming, basically. And nonconforming is something you don't want to be designated when you're residential. That creates red flags when, for example, somebody wants to refinance their home, or somebody wants to sell and they're getting an appraisal. Because oftentimes, a nonconformity will create hiccups. Actually, it's more than a hiccup. It's a grinding halt sometimes. If an appraisal, appraiser asks a question specifically, and we get this, ask this question on a regular basis, can I rebuild my house if it gets destroyed? Well, there are ways to do it, but it requires several city approvals by the council. And appraisers don't like any guesswork. They like to, I get A, B, and C. I don't wanna have to go through a process where I might get derailed. That causes, causes them heartburn and concerns. So for that reason, we're, we had over seven hundred properties in the city that fell into this category of legal nonconforming, most of them residential. So we're in phase three again tonight, and we'll go through that. We'll go through the five parcels or five areas or subdivisions that we're gonna be addressing in this, in this round, phase three. And so I think that pretty much explains it, Mr. Chairman. I know when, when we start going down to the specific properties, I'm assuming Anthony is gonna read in, read into the record, the ordinance headings, and we can, no, we're not going to, okay. Well, I will take care of that then, and I'll describe the specific properties that we're gonna be dealing with. Perfect. That saves us some, saves. Okay, well, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna do a presentation by parcel. So, Mr. Chairman, when you, when you get to the point where you wanna start going through each of the parcels, just, just turn it back over to me and I'll, I'll, I'll do that. We'll go through the first one.
Well, I would propose then that, well, remember the game, remember the rules of the game, comrades. We wear two hats. We are the local planning agency, and it's a separate board empowered. We are the planning and zoning board. We happen to be the same people, and, and that is fortunate. If we were different people, two different board appointments, wouldn't be as clean and easy. But tonight, we're going to sit as a local planning agency while we deal with the land, the land use map change. And then we'll be putting on the other hat of the planning and zoning board. The ordinance, the ordinance change, making the land match the land use. State says you gotta have land use plan, then you do rezoning. You don't? If rezoning doesn't match the land use, go back, change the land use. So we're gonna do first things first. We're gonna take each parcel. We're gonna change the, recommend the change to the land use map by amendment. And then we'll follow that with a hat change immediately and become zoning board, and we'll recommend change to ordinance to make. To establish the statute. So looking for the land use map on the, yeah, so we're gonna start with the land use map change. On Seashell Lane.
Well, you want me to start, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to sort of work through the first one so we can get on a rhythm here. Which one's the first one?
Anchorage Avenue.
My paperwork is not matching what I went through the other day, and I don't like that. What's the first one? Part of it, oh, I see what it is. We got the, part of the minutes intermixed with the agenda here. Right back, yeah. The first one is the changing the future land use map for Anchorage Avenue. Okay. So I turn it over to David, and then discover, summarize the parcels and the land use change. Then we will vote on an ordinance change. Then we will come back behind that, and we'll vote on an ordinance to change the zoning to match it, and we'll do that each time. Now, go ahead, Dave.
All right, thank.
Play off each other here.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to move through this quickly. I've given the background of kind of where we, how we got to where we are this evening. So that, that background and that, that information will be applicable to all of these ordinances that we're gonna be reading this evening. So you can just kind of consider that as a, each of the specific sites. So I'm really gonna kind of focus on the, the specific properties in, in this phase of my presentation. So the first ordinance is the future land use amendment from C one to R two. And you can see that in the ordinance right after the agenda cover for Anchorage Avenue. And if you flip back into the attachment A of that ordinance, you can see the parcels that we're discussing. They're at the end of Anchorage Avenue. I don't know if you, if you printed them in your color copiers, you can see they're, they're highlighted in yellow.
Put it on the computer screen.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I, if we have those for this, for this meeting.
Okay.
So you.
We'll work with the paper.
You're gonna have to refer to your, to your attachments. There you go, right there.
Exhibit A is, you've got one, an exhibit A for every one of them. Would've been A, B, C, and D would've been better.
Yeah.
A, B, exhibit A.
Exhibit A for, the future land use ordinance for Anchorage Avenue. Again, these are, this is a developed site. There's existing residential structures on it. It's at the end of Anchorage Avenue, which is, you can see from exhibit A. And again, the proposal is to change the future land use designation from C one to R two. And that reflects the density and the type of development that is existing on the site. It's very consistent with what we've done in the past. I would say ninety-five percent of the homes that we're going to be addressing in this, through this nonconforming project are gonna be zoned to R two and future land use of R two. So that's consistent with what we're doing here. And I don't know, Anthony, do we just need to, I just need to close my presentation for the comp plan amendment ordinance, or can I make it for both the comp plan and the rezoning and then just have the board act?
Yeah, I would just go ahead and do the presentation for the entire property, both the comp plan amendment and the zoning amendment. And then the board would vote on each one separately.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Chairman, if you, the next page past exhibit A is the next ordinance. And this is an ordinance to rezone the parcel at the end of, the parcels at the end of Anchorage Avenue from C two to R one. In Cape Canaveral, our future land use districts are identical to our zoning districts as far as what they're labeled. So the future land use is from C two to R one, or C one to, excuse me, C one to R two. The zoning is from C one to R two as well. And again, if you go to the exhibit to that ordinance, it's, obviously, it's the same parcels. So if there's any specific questions about this, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm happy to answer them. I, I will say with respect to notice, because that's always a very important question and issue, we did follow the city's process for noticing this, these properties. We sent out mailers to the owners of the properties. As far as I know, we've not heard back from any of them regarding the properties that we're gonna be considering this evening. And I'm not sure if we may or may not have people here to speak to this, these two specific ordinances, but I'm not aware of any concerns or issues from any of the property owners with respect to these two ordinances.
Yeah, I think they're all great for it. We're cleaning this up, so if you get more of these, I have a current. Okay, then the, the next thing we'll do then is have a vote on the ordinance changing the land use, I mean, land use map. And that is. And I'm looking for a number here that all twenty twenty-two. How you wanna, how you wanna do that?
I think, Anthony, I think I would just reference the, in, in the ordinance heading, it references Anchorage Avenue properties. Is that specific enough for purposes of the motion?
The motion should, you know, accept approval, recommend approval of the future land use map amendment for Anchorage Avenue. Properties, you know, that are noted. And then the second motion would be recommend approval of the rezoning of the Anchorage Avenue property.
Okay.
You would do that repeatedly for each of the subject areas. Future land use map first.
So we're gonna do one, two, one, two, one, two, all the way through. So the land use map is, you, you see it. It's on two exhibits, exhibit A for land use change and exhibit A for the zoning change. So let's talk about the ordinance for the land use map thing. May I hear a motion to approve a land use amendment to change the future land use designation of multiple parcels of real property located at one forty-six, one forty-seven, one fifty-six, one fifty-seven, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, one seventy-six, and one seventy-seven on the Anchorage Avenue parcel. May I hear a motion for approval of this.
Chairman, I make a motion for approval as stated.
Yeah, recommend approval. And may I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
All right. Now, we've discussed it. Usually, I don't have to ask for discussion after we've get a motion because we've already hashed it over. But I'll do it this time. Any more, anything else? Anything bothering anybody? All right, we've got a motion in a second to recommend approval of the land use amendment for the Anchorage Avenue properties. Patty, call a roll. For. Recommend, recommend approval, for.
I'm sorry?
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Okay, I guess I beat that then. Then the next part of that is to recommend approval of an ordinance change. To rezone the same parcels of Anchorage Avenue. C one to R two. Is our motion so, to, so stated.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezone of the Anchorage Avenue properties in C one to R two.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion to rezone.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Russell.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Thank you. Then the next parcel we will talk about for a land use map amendment is Bakersfield subdivision located at part of one forty-six, one forty-eight on Ocean Garden Lane.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is really a house cleaning item. The board remembers this is the, the Ocean Gardens project was part of the phase two effort. Unbeknownst to us, there is a subdivision within the subdivision. So when we asked the property appraiser for all the parcels in the Ocean Gardens Lane, that's what they gave us. These two parcels were, I'm not gonna try to explain it, but they were further subdivided from the original subdivision, and they are now known as the Bakersfield subdivision. And so they did not come up in our initial ask of the property appraiser's office. So we are cleaning this up. Again, these are, these are developed residential homes on, on two individual lots. All of the same information that I provided initially applies to these two pieces. The staff is recommending both, well, we're recommending that the comprehensive plan land use be amended from C one to R two. And we're also recommending the zoning be changed from C one to R two. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Are there any questions for the staff? Good. May I hear a motion to approve a future land use amendment changing the Bakersfield subdivision properties located on one forty-six, one forty-seven Garden Lane from C one to C two.
C one to R two.
C one to R two. R two. I stand corrected. From C one to R two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the land use. Resolution as stated for Baker, for the Bakersfield subdivision.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Patty, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Russell.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Next is the motion to recommend approval for the ordinance change for rezoning that same property. C two, R two. And I'm trying to, Matt Russell with the paperwork unless keep it in front of me as we do it. Let's see, that's Bakersfield, that was here. There's an ordinance buried in here, and there's a map buried in here. So have we talked about the, the land use map?
Yes, we just, we just approved that or recommended.
Okay, we recommend, and let me get the ordinance change in front of me. Yeah, it reads the same as the other one. You have in front of you the ordinance for rezoning the multiple parcels of Bakersfield subdivision. Parcel's one forty-six, one forty-eight on Ocean Garden Lane. I'm not gonna read the entire ordinance. Uh, change the land use, or the rezoning from C one to R two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we accept the proposal of rezoning from C one to R two, the Bakersfield subdivision.
Is there a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. Patty, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Russell.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore. Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Okay, and the third action is to take action for land use map change and rezoning of Gazella, Gazella.
That's how I pronounce it.
Gazella Townhomes.
Could be some other way, but that's how I.
Uh, you wanna talk about the land use map for that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, all the previous information I read into the record applies here. This is a multiple parcel townhouse project. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's just north of the Spaceman warehouse site, kind of across the street from Oak Manor. Kind of tucked in there, but it's, it's, the situation again is it's, it's zone commercial, but it is developed residential. We are proposing a future land use map amendment as well as a rezoning from C one to R two, and staff recommends approval of both of those ordinances, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take them one at a time then, the ordinance for the land use change, land use, future land use map change. Those in favor of recommending that ordinance as written? Let me ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the ordinance change for the Gavilla Townhomes from C one to R two.
Thank you.
I second.
So we have a motion in a second to change the land use map from C one to R two. Patty, call a roll.
Mr. Russell.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Okay, and then following that is the ordinance that rezones that same property. And may I have a motion to recommend approval for rezoning from C one to R two for the Gazella Townhome.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the Gavilla Townhomes, C one to R two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Patty, would you call a roll on that one, please?
Mr. Russell.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. All right, and then following the Gazella Townhome section is the one to Harbor Heights Townhome, Townhouses for rezoning and future land use map. Item four. This is a land use map amendment to change Harbor Heights Townhouses located at one eleven thirteen, one fifteen, one seventeen, one nineteen Harbor Drive. From C one to R two. Is there a motion to recommend that land use map change?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the land use change for the Harbor Heights subdivision.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Call a roll.
Mr. Russell.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. And then next is the rezoning ordinance for that same parcel. Is there a motion to recommend that ordinance for rezoning from C one to R two? May I have a motion, please?
I'll recommend that motion to rezone those properties from C one to R two.
Thank you. We have, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, would you call a roll on that?
Mr. Russell.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. Thank you. And that brings us to item five, and that's rezoning and changing future land use map for parcels eighty-eight one, eighty-eight three. I'm sorry, eighty-eight oh one, eighty-eight oh three, and eighty-eight oh five on Seashell Lane, and eighty-eight oh two and eighty-eight oh four on Atlantic Avenue. Do I have a motion to change the land use map for those parcels? Now, let me restate that. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance, the land use change for the Seashell Lane property?
I make the motion to rezone the.
Yeah, we're talking about land use.
The land use from C two to R one for the North Atlantic half in Seashell Lane in the exhibit A.
I think that's C one to R two.
Oh, sorry. C one to R two.
It is confusing. You're right.
That's why I have the paper in front of me. I'm reading, I'm looking at this thing as a roadmap, so we don't.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for the land use map change, and we have a motion, and is there a second?
I just second.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we got untangled, and would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Russell.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Ms. Danny.
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore.
For the motion.
Dr. Miller.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion. All right, and then following that is the rezoning ordinance. Again, the rezoning ordinance changes the zoning of those same parcels from C one to R two. Do I have a motion to recommend approval of that zoning ordinance?
I'll make motion to approve the rezoning of the property stated from C one. I'll make motion to approve the rezoning of the property stated from C one to R two.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Take your pick. Um, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Russell?
For.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Jenny?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion. Thank you. So those rezoning changes and land use map changes and the ordinances that go with them are approved, are recommended for approval through the council. It's hard not to get tangled up in all the C twos, C ones, R twos, and so forth. But we have to do it for the tape and for the legal, uh, legal. All right, we're done with that. And, uh, now, we're gonna shift gears and talk about that last item on your agenda, reports open discussion regarding the lead for a mixed-use land use category in the comp plan. And I turn it over to, uh, who wants to talk about that, David or Anthony?
I'll start.
Okay.
If Anthony would like to jump in, he's more than welcome to. Um, he spoke a lot last night, so we're gonna try to give him some time off. We had a very lengthy council meeting until eleven o'clock last night. It was five hours. I wanna thank the board chairman as well as the board for going through ten ordinances in half an hour, it's about three minutes apiece, that's wonderful, and thank you, it's very efficient. And I certainly, I know we all appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, let's not make light of the speed because I think we treated it right, we did the numbers, we've had a chance to look at the homework, everybody had a chance to have their say, we had no objections. And we moved through it.
Agreed.
That's what I intend to do, do it right and save everybody's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Um, so let's talk a little bit about mixed use. Mixed use is a, um, it's a concept that is becoming more and more popular amongst, um, cities and urban planners and developers. Typically, let's, let's first all describe what it is. Mixed use is just that, it's a mix of uses typically on a single parcel. Um, we really don't have any good examples right now in Cape Canaveral of a mixed use project, and that's one of the reasons we're here to speak tonight. Uh, but if you, if you've been to any, um, larger urban areas, they're typically in a downtown area where there's a mix of uses. Typically, what you'll find is the first floor storefronts, retail, commercial, offices, things like that. Generally, going up from there, floors two, three, four, however high it goes, you'll find offices potentially, generally it can be residential. So you're mixing uses on a single piece of property in a single project, hence mixed use. Um, and as I said, mixed use is becoming more and more popular. And the, the, the challenge we have with mixed use here in Cape Canaveral is that our, our, um, our codes don't necessarily facilitate mixed use. As this board knows, we have, generally, we have two documents that guide and govern how we develop land. The first kind of overarching policy document is our comprehensive plan, specifically our future land use element within the comprehensive plan, which dictates what you can do and establishes the different land use districts, some of which we were talking tonight, the commercial districts, the residential districts, and industrial districts. Um, and the land use districts just provide general statements about what can and can't happen on, in, in those specific land use districts, such as residential two land use district. The comprehensive plan says you can develop up to fifteen units an acre in R two, and it just gives some general concept, general statements about residential development. So that's the comprehensive plan. Now, how the comprehensive plan is implemented, the nuts and bolts of how that happens is within our zoning ordinance or our land development code, known as either one. And our, our zoning code under the R two zoning district, which is, there's a R two zoning district in there. It gets into the specific, as I said, the nuts and bolts, it establishes setbacks, how many feet you have to be in a property to develop. What size lot you need to develop, the frontages and the depth requirements of the lots, how many square feet the home has to be. All those nuts and bolts, those details are in the zoning ordinance. So you've got the general, general policy statements in the comp plan, and you've got the more specific nuts and bolts in the zoning ordinance. Comp plan takes precedent, anytime there's a conflict, comp plan takes precedent. That's an important point, specifically about mixed use. Our zoning ordinance allows for mixed use, it has language in it about mixed use. If you're familiar with our overlay district, which is established in our zoning ordinance, it's a section in our zoning ordinance. Mixed use is mentioned throughout the overlay district, and it's actually permitted, it specifically permits mixed use in the overlay district. That's great, that's all well and good, but the problem is our comprehensive plan does not allow for mixed use. As I said earlier, it only references those very discrete zoning districts, R one, R two, C one, C two, and M one. And those don't allow for a mixture of uses within those, within those discrete categories. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the concept of mixed use. If that's something that we're interested in encouraging in the city, and if we are, some general, I'd like to have a general discussion with the board tonight and maybe take some of those thoughts that, that are, we share this evening and go back and kind of huddle up with Anthony, maybe we can prepare an ordinance or some further language. We don't have to jump straight to an ordinance, if you wanna come back and talk a little, talk about it a little bit further, that's fine. I just think what we wanted to do this, this evening is talk a little bit about mixed use. Patty, would you fire up those, um, photos? I have some photos that I've, um, put, put together. I think will be helpful, and these are, these are examples of, um, mixed use projects that I was able to find on the internet, and I think that are representative of, of, of both small-scale mixed use projects as well as large scale. I mean, there's, I'm sure you're all seen some very significantly large mixed use projects, more urban areas. Um, go ahead, can you just kind of, maybe every thirty seconds or, you know, fifteen seconds, just kind of flip through, um, flip through these? So you can see, I, oh, this, okay, that's fine, we'll stay here. I, I wanna point out that most of these photos can show first floor retail office, they're small shops typically, um, and then residential moving up. Uh, you can also see an important aspect of this type of development is the very, I'll call it pedestrian-oriented development. It's, it's really scaled for pedestrians. And that is something that's very attractive. Um, go ahead Patty, next one, please? Okay, also something that's a common theme through these slides is you're gonna see a, a pronounced emphasis on that corner retail site down there on the first floor. You'll know, kind of pay particular attention to that, to all of these projects. It's a, it's, it's a theme that's found throughout, throughout the projects. And this one here is one, two, three, four, this is a six-story mixed use project, again, very pedestrian-oriented. Um, an area for sidewalk cafes, um, you know, things like that. There also, another important aspect of these mixed use projects typically are how they're brought, they're advanced into the front of the, they're moved up closer to the street. There's no parking out in front of the building, typically parking is on the back side of the building. Again, that lends itself towards more of a pleasant pedestrian experience rather than navigating cars and, and parking lots. So that's another aspect of, of mixed use that, um, that is common through these, these slides. Next one, please? Okay, it's just another example, again, notice the corner. Next one, I think I've got four or five more. Okay, yeah, okay, let's stop here just for a second. This is more of a, a small-scale mixed use project. Next one? Again, much smaller. Is that the last one? Okay, thank you Patty. All right, so that kind of gives you an idea of, when we, when, when you hear mixed use, or when I hear mixed use, those are, those are typical examples of what I think um, mixed use is and what it represents, so. Um, again, the, the point I wanna make is, and I'm gonna kind of turn it back over to the chairman or Anthony to, to jump in here, is that mixed use is something that's currently not allowed in our code, in our comprehensive plan, we would need to establish a new future land use category to, um, to facilitate that. And I'm gonna talk just briefly about why we're having this, what's the timing, what's the importance of this conversation? About nine months ago, I was, we were approached, the city was approached by a gentleman out of South Florida. Um, he has purchased a number of properties on Center Street, which is on this.
And, and I'd like to ask the board members, here's the point of the discussion and the input, turn your ears on, really perk up and listen to this part. Go ahead.
Yeah. He's, he's purchased a number of properties on Center Street, on the north side of Center Street, if you're familiar, if you're familiar with the Wizard of Oz Museum, it's down there on the east side of, of North Atlantic, on the north side of Center. Purchased that building, he's purchased a building behind that one, there's a third property he's purchased, and he has an option on the fourth one, he has about seven acres, all the way to the old Verizon building. Doesn't go all the way down to the condos, but he's pretty close. Seven acre site, it's a significant site. And he is interested in doing a mixed use project on that property. Now, the, this is, this is where the challenge is, this is where we're gonna start having to really roll up our sleeves and having some interesting conversations. We're gonna talk theoretical or more policy right now, quickly. I've been here eight years, almost nine years, and in those nine years, I hear about blight every year, multiple, multiple times, on what is the city doing about blight? How are we gonna clean blight up in this city? My opinion is the way that we significantly affect blight is we have to redevelop our way out of blight. Um, code enforcement that gets bashed on a constant basis, why aren't they cleaning up blight? Code, code enforcement is not a tool, a proper tool, to clean up blight and to get rid of blight. We can put a pretty face on it and keep it painted and, uh, you know, but through code enforcement, but that doesn't really address the, the root problem. One of, one of the statements that sticks with me about our CRA plan, our, our community redevelopment area plan, is that it's, it talks quite a bit about the age of the structures in the city of Cape Canaveral. And they're getting tired. And it's, it's, it's some of them frankly just need to go. Now, for a developer, and if, 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 if we want the property owners to redevelop, my experience is that some of, some of our property owners are happy with what they have, and they're, we're going to, we're going to have what we have out there for a while. In order to incentivize developers, there's, we're going to have to identify reasons for them to come in and redevelop a site. And there's, there's increased expense on redeveloping a site versus a greenfield or a vacant property. They have to buy a improved site, which is more expensive than a green site. They have to tear down the improvement on that site, which obviously adds cost to your redevelopment project. And so right now, as I, as I mentioned earlier, I think I did, right now, our, our residential districts, they max out at fifteen units an acre. That's, that's the most dense residential density we allow currently in the city of Cape Canaveral, it's fifteen units an acre. Residential. Our hotels, on the other hand, are, we have some three and a half acres, hundred and fifty units. So let's, let's just say forty-five units an acre on some of the newer hotels. Um, so we've got some, we've got some examples of some density, higher density than the fifteen. Also, if you remember, a few years ago, we went, came in and addressed a lot of the non-conforming condos on the beach, and a lot of them were up in the thirties and forty unit, an acre. And they were zoned R three, which only allows fifteen units an acre, so they were all up non-conforming as well. So we addressed all those several years ago. My point being is that we have examples of higher density in the city of Cape Canaveral than just fifteen. Back to my, back to the, uh, challenge that we have is how do we incentivize developers to come in and wanna do something with some of these redevelopment opportunities when they can get fifteen units an acre, which doesn't provide the, um, return that they need to pay for some of this activity and some of this work, so that's one of the things, if the board decides to move forward with this discussion, that's one of the things that we're gonna have to wrestle with, is density in mixed use. I'm not talking about densities in our R one and R two subdivisions, that, that is what it is. I'm talking about in our mixed use projects, and particularly the redevelopment projects. Um, if we have a mixed use on a greenfield, that may be a different thing. But is, if, if we need, if we're gonna properly incentivize our redevelopment of some of our blighted properties, there needs to be a carrot, if you will, to, uh, to, to, to get some of these developers to bite. So anyways, that, that's, that's one of the challenges we're gonna face is, is, is density, um, on, on our, on our mixed use projects. Now, another thing is location of mixed use project, and there's a lot of questions and things we can get into, and we will, as, as that's fine, as we, as we get into some of these conversations, we can really start digging into some of this stuff, so I think really tonight, I was just hoping to have a general kind of high-level conversation about mixed use, whether that's something that this board thinks is appropriate in Cape Canaveral. Um, and what I would like is to get some feedback from the board, if that's something the board would like to consider talking about, and then Anthony and I can prepare some stuff, and maybe we can kind of take the next step as, in, in the months that follow, but.
Did we ask Patty to put up, uh, chart, let's see, this one is, the one you have up now is eight. Back at seven, six, to the fifth, number five, back at the chart. I haven't put that one up. That, hmm, one more. Well, okay, that, that's good enough to talk from right there. Now I wanna, you've heard that, what David has, I'm gonna put a different coloration on it. Do not leave here tonight with the thought that we're gonna change the density. Not true. We fought that battle years ago, and if you wanna read about, about the war, or read the little green book that we give everybody on Comp-Printed Planet. That's over and done with and settled, fifteen units per acre for residential and thirty units per acre for commercial. And that's the way we kept our small-town nature. However, it came a time when we looked up and said we really need to revitalize our main thoroughfare into a combination of commercial and living, so that people could have businesses and live above them if they choose to. And that was the thinking that we built the overlay district. And it goes down the middle of town and reaches about one or two hundred feet either way on each side of the main thoroughfare. There you go. So, if you have homework tonight, well, you will, this is your homework. Go, go and get from the staff, or from the internet, however you wanna work it, get the overlay district code that we put in place years ago. Because the overlay district has never really been implemented until now, we have an opportunity to really implement the, given the tape, in the, your. We have an opportunity to really implement, given the tape, in the, you'll read that the overlay district gave those strict zoning limitations in the other zones. They remain the same, by the way. We're not changing any zoning, any density in any of those zoning. We're talking about the overlay district. So, I want you to go and reread the overlay district. And what it really did was give us the leeway to make adjustments with the developer on this density, small adjustments on density. Now, look at this chart.
Martha, before you get into that, can I just ask one question? You're talking about Center Street, and you're talking about multiple properties on Center Street. It feels to me like that may go outside of the overlay district, is that correct?
What happens on Center, it can be a catalyst to what happens up and down the rest of the town for.
Well, the only reason I mention that is because you're talking about overlay, and I'm thinking that some of that property might be outside of the overlay district.
Yeah, I want to say it's all within the overlay. The westernmost piece may be outside it, but the concept of the project, at least the initial concept, is for it to be a stair step, and it would stair step towards the west, and it would be two stories on the west, two-story, very upscale townhomes. And so, that would need to take advantage of some of the height allowances of the overlay. So, but yeah, I'll go back and verify that.
I mean, I'm not trying to shut this discussion down, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're talking about the same thing.
And Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment? Okay, I'll make it quick. I also want to make, sensitize the board to, the council just finished its annual retreat, strategic retreat. And last night at the council meeting, the final draft of the report was discussed by the board. And if we haven't sent it out, we're going to send it out first thing in the morning, a draft of the report to each of you, so you can become familiar with what is being discussed this year with the board as far as its strategic retreat. One of the themes that's coming up, starting to bubble up a little bit, is to preserve our small-town heritage. And so, that also needs to be part of the soup, as we're stirring all these ingredients around. So, but there's going to be a number of those ingredients that we dump into the kettle that we're going to be stirring and chewing on. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, too, because that's an important, important thing with citizens and the councils, you know, we don't want to become a Fort Lauderdale or Miami Beach, we're Cape Canaveral, and, so anyways, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We want to stay us, but at the same time, in order to get there and get some improvement, the developers come in, and we've got this one developer who has an ocean to put in a mixed-use application on that property on Center Street. So, we were, we, the staff, me and the, the staff and I are trying to put in your minds is the background, how we get there. Mixed use says to you is, if you have mixed use, you don't have zoning. Well, we do have zoning in all parts of town except overlay. So, that's where we gave ourselves a chance to have mixed use. So, the gentleman might want more density for his apartment or living unit than our ordinance allows. But on the other hand, the developer might want more or less density for commercial applications on the property, mixed. We haven't heard the final, we haven't even heard the beginning proposal, but this is to get you, the board, to start thinking about how we put. As Anthony called it, bricks and mortar, the real words or the ordinances in play that make the overlay mixed-use work. We haven't done that yet. We have a piece of legislation that gives us the opportunity to do it, to make adjustments in height, density, usage on different parcels in the overlay district. So, like, again, please go read that overlay district legislation and the ideas behind it. And then that gives us the segue to go in and talk about this Center Street development, redevelopment, I call it. So, I guess that's all I need to say about it. Anthony, do you want to add some thoughts about how we're going to put feet in hands to the overlay district legislation? You, your voice wants it to want to see, in the future, we would have to build words and zoning ordinances, make that work.
Well, I think there needs, as you said, the bricks and mortar, I mean, the language, the implementation code that allows for a mixed-use development, where you have a variety or diversity of uses on a singular property, without having to deal with, like, linear type, segregated zoning district, where you have residential, you have, you have commercial, and commercial is usually allowed in commercial, residential is allowed in residential. The city doesn't have that implementation vehicle to combine the two, and say, on this particular property, you can have a diversity of mix of uses, commercial and residential. So, that needs, that implementation vehicle is what really needs to be created. There probably, David and I have talked about it, and there may be different ways to kind of accomplish that. You mentioned the EOD, or the overlay district. I would suggest, at this stage, that is just a singular factor, that I would think, given especially what the community has said they're envisioning, and the council, that is just a singular factor. I don't think anyone could imagine opening up the entire EOD and every single piece of property in the overlay district to be high-density mixed-use development. That would seem to run counter to the visioning process, et cetera, et cetera. However, you know, the starting point, maybe a particular property with certain attributes, and maybe certain attributes of a fully-qualified developer, may, you know, may afford an opportunity to approve a mixed-use development project, right? So, you know, we have to look at that implementation vehicle, undoubtedly, it will require at least a Comp Plan amendment, and that may, that may be the implementation vehicle in and of itself, we don't know yet, but those are some of the ideas we've been talking, talking about. Center Street is in the overlay district. Right now, it's currently zone C2, but we can't do that mixed use there, right? So, we'll look at it. EOD, the notion of get overlay as a starting point, Mr. Chair, I would think, there's other tools in there that the planners, like David, would use to, that help build a quality development project, but it is not, in and of itself, the implementation vehicle to allow mixed use. That's where we really need to, need to focus on that bricks and mortar language, to create that implementation vehicle, so you can kick the tires a little bit. It could be a pilot, it's a pilot project. Would be one way to deal with it, and you could, you know, some communities create and some communities would offer a developer an opportunity to present a project and implement, but the implementation of that project would require a special development agreement, a special designation by Comp Plan, and perhaps with a special Comp Plan amendment, so this particular area is going to be mixed use. So, there's different ways to, different ways to do it, so you can balance all of the interests and constrain this mixed use somewhat, so it doesn't, you know, upset the balance, the small-town feel, versus, you know, a high-density mixed-use project. May be appropriate in one location, but it may not be, you know, appropriate, you know, proliferating everywhere, right? You gotta look at it and look face to face.
When we started down this journey, a year ago, I, with the overlay district, gave ourselves the chance to do mixed use, I had in mind the notion that we would determine the densities and the usages on a negotiated basis when we approved the building and the site forms and the architecture. And Anthony brought in the other end of that plank, that says, no, we need to codify that somehow, so that it doesn't do violence to the rest of the ordinances. So, yeah. So, what we'd like to have you do is go away, educate yourself about the background of this, open your mind to adjustments to the present zoning ordinances for residential, commercial, because he wants to put it all in the same place, and he wants to mix it up. How do we do that? Okay, so, I backed away and said to myself, we give this developer, or incentivize the developer with the right encouragement, come forward with something, come forward with the concept. Maybe nudge, you know, nudge the density a little bit, or nudge the height a little bit, or nudge the usage for commercial a little bit. Nudge it means enlarge it, but don't do violence to our ordinances. Just show us the adjustments that you'd really like to have, and then we'll negotiate on the adjustment, if we can tolerate. In other words, open your minds, here it comes, folks.
I make a.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I don't want us to focus solely on a possible project. I think I'd like the board to kind of look at citywide idea, and approach it citywide versus a specific project. But I think what Lamar just said kind of got my head spinning a second. Cape Canaveral is changing, it's going to change, it is changing, and it's going to continue to change. And I know I've, I'm preaching to the choir here.
And that's okay, it needs to change, but we're in charge of the change.
Exactly, and that was the point I wanted to make. I mean, it looks like the aquarium is getting a lot closer to reality, and that is going to be a huge driver of what Cape Canaveral looks like and becomes. And there's also other projects that are moving forward, that it's, we need to, we need to be out in front of it, we need to be able to control it properly. That's, that was my, that was my point.
I haven't seen the revisioning report, and that's my homework, to go and reread that, or read the changes to it. So, we need to keep that in mind, because the revisioning, revisioning meetings reflect the thinking of the whole town, how do we want to be? And some of you probably involved in those. I didn't go to it, because I have a wife who needs close care, so I haven't been as involved in some of those things as I normally would have been. So, there are going to be pressures on you, that's fine, I decide, determine where you stand, but let's, don't do the violence to our existing ordinances, but, you know, let's get something good for the city, and if we have to make some adjustments in the concept or ideas that are put in front of us, fine, let's entertain it, we're, it could be very fun.
Mr. Chair, is there a consensus on the board that it's something that we want to move forward with and continue to discuss?
Can I ask a question? Open, open forth. All right, last year, we approved a project on that parcel of land just south of Zerillas, and it is, it's commercial on the bottom, and wasn't it condominiums on the top?
No.
Okay, what was it? I don't, refresh my memory.
We had a, we had to create, I'm going to say, create a new definition of, I think it was a hotel unit, or something like that.
So, it's a hotel?
It's.
So, it's still commercial?
Right at the corner, A1A and Central.
Yes, yes.
Right there on the north, north.
It was a, it was a project that was moving forward, I believe it was moving forward under our, what's our designation, Anthony, tourist develop? You know what I'm talking about? There's a, there's a specific category of use that, that is permitted.
It was a commercial on time, on time.
It's commercial on the first floor, residential, I'm not going to say residential is more commercial.
Okay.
Throughout, it's not truly a residential project, more of a whole L-type project.
I thought, I thought it was.
No, but, but what?
It's the same concept.
Yes, exactly, it's going to look a lot like that, not possibly. So, yeah, that would be a good, good example. The ownership may be a little different, that's what kind of creates that different category. But, yeah, yeah, so anyways, I just, yeah, I'd like to get a little feedback, Mr. Chairman, from the board, I don't want to go down a path if there's not support or interest by the board.
I'm going to take a leap here, and I'm going to say, I like the idea of looking into it.
I think I would like to consider the mixed use, you know, and I'd like to make sure it's still a small-town thing, and make sure we have the right infrastructure for the sidewalks and the traffic and all of that.
Having the CRA concept, there's another piece of homework I invite you to go do, go read about what the CRA, I even had the staff, while, earlier today, pluck that up for me, because I'd sort of forgot how it works, but it generates money for us to go and do infrastructure improvements, so that's a good thing. And this could be partly a CRA, don't know. Go ahead, I didn't mean to take all of your time.
And I just want to say, I agree with the small-town feel, but you can also upscale that small-town feel. It doesn't have to feel like it's a small town.
Well, I'd like to pair it with the other board members have said so far, and I just can't explain to you how excited I am to have the opportunity to work on something like this. I think it's a big step for the city, and it, it's an important thing, I'm 100% for it, and I'm excited about the opportunity to work on it.
I agree with all the comments that I've heard tonight, I don't think it's a mansion with mixed use, I think we have to look at it. I think it would be great, as long as we were able to keep it in line, and I think that can be done.
Yes, I believe so.
I think it's been real clear that we want to keep the small-town concept, and there's lots of models in existence, all over the place, that have done that same thing, mixed use with the small-town feel. A lot of them are pretty expensive resort families.
Celebration, yeah.
Well, I appreciate the comments from the board. And I'd like to tell you, from, tell the board, this is for me, I don't have any preconceptions, I'm not trying to drive the board in any direction, I'm excited about this, too. My job is to help you, where I drive is, I drive, fortunately, get meetings done, get motions done, get the homework done, save your time and mine, to be efficient with everybody's time, but we want to do it right. So, I don't have any preconceived notions about this, I'm excited. Let's invite the contractor or developer, whatever we refer to. Let's invite the contractor or developer, whatever we refer to, to bring forward ideas. Bring them forward and convey to the developer, I think I'm saying it right for the board, that we're open to hear what the developer would like to bring forward.
Well, this, this is the first step tonight. We have a lot of work ahead of us. I'm sure there'll be some work sessions just with the board. I'm sure there'll be some public hearings that will certainly generate some public interest and, and comments. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of strong feelings both ways on this issue that the board will have to listen to and consider. So, it's, it's, it'll be a very dynamic process, I think. I'm looking forward to it.
Our, our job is to help the city work through it.
Well, and with the leadership that we have through you and Anthony, it'll be an easy, easy process, right?
Wow.
No pressure there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have any, any other discussions to address? July the seventh, which is July the what?
July the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty...
No.
Twenty-seventh. I'm available.
I'm available.
Yeah.
I'm not available, so I don't know if you're telling, I'm putting them on the agenda, but I'm at the annual city attorney conference. I'm not there.
That's a drunken boss.
Can we go?
I'm available any other, I mean, the sixth, the thirteenth, the twentieth, or you want to pick a, pick a Thursday?
Can you do Thursday that week?
Not that week, not that week. Yeah, but that's the first three days. It's a three-day, very intense conference.
Yeah, yeah. Where's it going to be? Markel Island?
I'm on the, on the twentieth. The third of August, I'm available.
Sure?
Yeah.
That's the first week teachers come down. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, we'll, we'll send out a calendar for, how good it's actually used. Anything else, Anthony?
Anything from any other board, anything you want to toss out there? Well, thank you for your work tonight. Thank you for doing the homework to get this done the way we did it. Appreciate it. So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
And I had to call a roll, I think it's going to be unanimous.
Mr. Russell?
Laura.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion. Okay, we are adjourned.
Lamar, thank you so much. I mean that seriously.